It is 6:04 on Monday, May 7th, 2018, and we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. This is gonna be a short meeting because after this one, which is gonna be about an hour if that, we're gonna go to the senior center to have another joint meeting with the finance committee and the select board regarding our FY 2019 budget. We have a couple of old business items, no new business today, and no minutes or consent agenda to approve. We have visitors' comments, if there's anyone, okay? So we'll jump into our old business directly. The first one is our strategic plan.
So it was introduced last time.
Okay.
And we've had a couple weeks now to look it over.
Mm-hmm.
And here to answer any questions about it.
Is this the... okay.
There will be some revisions, not to content and idea, but to some of the grammar on the poster. And so I've been talking with John White about getting it to the graphic designer, so those changes can be made. Your comments, really, on the poster.
Okay.
So.
I left some more comments to reward a few things.
Yep.
So that's already in there too?
Yes.
Okay, cool. I couldn't track if anybody else was leaving comments, but I saw that John closed the poster update and...
Comments where? What were you talking about?
So this is for strategic plan.
So we get the poster up for people to make, and the whole plan actually to make any comment, any last minute comments before it was presented two weeks ago.
Okay.
Most everybody emailed me, actually, that it looked good and they were pleased.
Okay.
You actually were the only person who went in and did what I asked.
I listened to Cheryl.
I know.
It may not be always apparent, but...
So I had a couple comments.
Yes.
Overall, it was very well thought out. I was very impressed, I have to say.
Committee was fabulous.
Yeah, it was just, it was very easy to read. I thought it was very succinct, you know, in all the goals, right to the point, not too wordy. So some of my comments were on strategic objective one, and these were just like thoughts that I just jotted down quickly. So for ensure curricula is aligned to Massachusetts frameworks and within the district. I had on revise units based upon student feedback and survey students regarding course satisfaction. That I just thought it would be important if we kept it confidential.
Sure.
So that, and I just think that you're gonna have more transparency of thoughts and feelings if students and staff know it's confidential. So I don't, I know we could do that somehow, right?
Yes.
And truly confidential.
Truly confidential.
And then the other one under create innovative programs of study, the last one, increase technology infrastructure. I just find it so frustrating that we have this in our strategic plan, yet we're cutting, you know, the $40,000 data manager. So it's like, how do you, you know, how do you do both? You spend all this time and energy creating this strategic plan, and then one of the first things to go is that position. So that was just something that I... Oh, okay. So on the measurable outcomes piece of the same strategic objective one, again, these are just random thoughts. Do the outcomes need to be more quantified? You know, maybe yearly progress as opposed to five years? Because we have a tendency, if we, if we know it's a five-year plan, then we can procrastinate. We can kick the can down the road and say, "Well, we got four years to go." Well, we got three years to go. So do we need to make more measurable timelines? Yeah, more progress goals.
I had a question.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead. No, if you're on the same page, you know, feel free to chime in. I'm just going through my thoughts. Let's see.
So, yeah, just to answer your question, I think one of the things that this is shaping is actually our meetings, because we would have progress monitoring built into our meetings. So every time we had a discussion, I know, it would be tied back to the strategic plan. So it may be talking about the things that we're doing, but then it may also be, listen, you know, we got our MCAS results, and then it's more of a progress monitor as we're going. But, you know, to your point, I think being more clear about what times of year those things will happen.
And being written down.
Mm-hmm.
If it's not in writing, then it really doesn't exist. In, I don't know, just in my experience. And it doesn't mean everything doesn't need to be written down, but I think we need to be held more accountable along the way somehow. Oh, and obviously, and then I just moved on to strategic objective three with the social and emotional. I could've said a lot more, but the only thing I had was that we continually need to assess staff and students for social, emotional health concerns. Again, more incremental ways of assessing. And I think it also gives us good information as to, you know, are social, emotional concerns getting better? You know, are there issues in particular areas of concern, whether it's anxiety or... But if we're continually monitoring and assessing in some formalized way, whether it's, you know, feedback, surveys, whatever, then we can also use that data to track.
Yep.
And I know that's a lot, you know, that's a lot to ask, but maybe even twice a year or something.
I know that Nancy Jenks, the nurse leader, has been talking about that, and so certainly that's in her wheelhouse, so.
The last thing that I had was on strategic objective number four, on the measurable outcomes. To me, it felt a little too loose. I had a couple of things, provide a level service budget on town floor for taxpayers to vote on. You know, again, something that needs to be written on these measurable outcomes. You know, of course, this is, this might be idealistic thinking, but I had create revolving accounts to address unanticipated school expenses. But it, to me, it just felt like the measurable outcomes was a little too weak. Maybe that's not the right word, but it maybe could be...
It was less developed.
Yeah, it was, thank you, less developed.
I agree.
Okay.
I think, I don't wanna speak for the committee, but I think it was a place that the committee didn't feel as confident in the measurable outcomes, like having measured all of that. They were confident in the goals of that objective, but not so much in how to get there.
Yeah, and that, that was definitely when I got to this part, it got was kinda clear. But I really enjoyed reading it.
Good.
And going through it and just, like, thinking about it and, I mean, gosh, if we could really, oh my gosh, if we could follow this, we'd be like, we'd be golden. We really would.
Yeah.
So I do thank everybody for all of the time and energy, because I can only imagine how much effort was put in here.
Thank you. Did you have any comments on the strategic plan? Jen?
No, Diane picked up on the strategic, the measurable outcomes on number five. I had a question on that. And seven, four. Oh, it's just a silly comment on the outcomes on strategic objective four. This percentage of students accepted at four-year college in the next bullet, but it doesn't say what the action is. It just says part of it. So is it like, obviously, percented increase? I'd imagine it's supposed to be increase in both. It's just a couple little things like that I picked up on. I have it, I have a file I can send, I didn't send it over to you. Some other little grammar things that you probably already grabbed.
Yes, there are a few.
So I can, I'll email it over.
Well, I'm glad you picked up on those, 'cause I didn't wanna...
Yeah, there are a few.
Yeah, and they're tiny. I mean, it's, if you feel, you know, I feel terribly, I'm mentioning this, it's amazing, but might as well go for full, you know...
Full disclosure.
Absolutely. Sounds great.
And the idea really is to have the poster really reflect concisely the work and then have that throughout the town, so that really everyone understands the work that we're doing.
Anything else? Okay, so I guess we're gonna vote to approve. Is there a motion to approve the strategic plan for 2019, 2022?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any other questions, comments?
So will we see a finalized version with some of these things we mentioned?
Yep.
Okay.
So.
Just the ones that we... I'm a little punchy, I should stop now.
We still have another meeting to go.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor to approve, please say aye.
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 It's a really strange feeling to work so long on something and to have it come down to a, you know, yes, this is the work that we're doing. So exciting, so thank you.
Yeah, we wanted to create that suspense. It was in doubt for a little while. Cool. All right, so the second item under old business is program of studies, 2018, 2019, for junior, senior high school.
Great.
So this is where we knock back those two requirements, right?
Yes. My recollection is that you just wanted to have some time to go through it one more time before you took a vote.
Yep. There were some, there were some questions. I guess Stephen's not gonna be available for continued conversation, but... On the...
I might have been there. I'm gonna have to have him only come to the joint meeting.
Okay.
So are we going to, are we gonna suspend the meeting and then go to the joint?
Yeah.
And then...
Resume.
Resume?
Yeah.
Okay. So he would be there if there were...
Okay.
Formal questions that I couldn't answer.
Yeah, I think the intent was, was clear that, one, we were changing the graduation requirements. There was freeing up some credits that could be used for other purposes. And part of it was increasing the number of electives, but focusing those electives on, on tracks that students are expressing an interest to study.
Yes.
Right, so it's the enrichment part, it's the preparing them for college, preparing them, preparing them for, for career part.
Right.
I think there were some questions around what that really means, whether or not there were any details around those electives. I think, Diane, you asked that question. So I'm not sure if that answer is available or not, but if we're gonna be voting on a change to our overall curriculum and graduation requirements, it would be good to know what that translates to.
Yeah, I, after I, you know, spending some more time thinking about it, I do have concerns about how the courses will be revised. And I just, I just wanna make sure that it's done, it's done in a thoughtful way.
So if, within that document, were those the only electives that were gonna be, that were going to be offered?
No, I believe the, the work was going to be, to work with staff to create or reestablish electives that had been eliminated, that students found engaging. That, you know, for example, it could be a law class that had been eliminated because there were four years of social studies, so there wasn't room in the student schedule to have that elective. But really going back to the staff to either reestablish those courses.
Good.
Either reestablish those courses or...
Hello.
I don't know, that's okay, sorry about that.
That was fine.
So, but also developing new ones. So, you know, when you talk about pathways for students, we're gonna talk next meeting about Project Lead the Way, which is initiative for grade seven and eight in technology and STEM. And I think developing that pathway so that students can see perhaps a career path in science and technology, engineering, or maybe they'll be coursework developed in a pathway around medical, medical terminology or medical engineering. So right now, it is, we have to have the space to invest the time and energy in creating the coursework, 'cause otherwise we're just in the courses that we currently are offering.
Right. So is that, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I don't like going back, like lowering the bar, per se, but...
Yeah, I understand that. I would say it's actually, it's actually raising the bar for some students, because they're able to see and take coursework that is actually going to benefit them in the coursework that they wanna take in the future or the career that they wanna go towards.
Right, that was gonna be my next step. Like, I can, I can take it better if I know more about what some of these electives may be now. Just what was in this document did not seem very diverse. It seemed like it was kind of, you know, pigeonholing everybody into going on to college, 'cause there were a lot of advanced placement, you know, classes. But if that's just like an old document, that it's not the current version, then, you know, I kinda would like to see what, what at least some of the ideas or thoughts are about what would like to be offered. But that makes it easier to swallow, you know, going down on the requirement.
I agree with Mike. My, my concern is that it's gonna end up being more, more AP prep courses and not necessarily a diverse array of electives.
And that's actually what we're trying to do, is create a more diverse array of electives. Courses like, you know, Stephen and I have been talking, courses that combine history standards with English standards. Let's say a course that might be, you know, literature of the Holocaust. You know, really engaging, motivating topics for kids that, you know, they really have an interest in, that they could dive deeper than they are when they're taking, you know, a course that is, you know, constricted by time. So that our courses would be more designed around content, interest, and engagement as opposed to, you know, coverage.
And I would say the program of study certainly, like I said last time, this isn't, I mean, it's what we have for now, but shouldn't be like, this is our final, this is our final product. It is what it is for this version of the program of study. Like I said last time, this is kind of late in the game, but the requirements are restricting and don't allow for that flexibility. So, I mean, we have students taking courses now because they have to take courses. And one could argue, are those courses more or less rigorous than a course that they could be taking? Is it taken away from a work-based learning opportunity? Is it, I mean, some of that is not quantifiable, but I think if we don't have additional flexibility, then we'll never get more courses for work-based learning. We'll never be able to get a student who might wanna take an additional science class if they're going into nursing. Well, because like right now, they need to, they need to check a box for a graduation.
So you kinda need us to vote to decrease those requirements in order to open up the doors to take in some more? So you really can't develop more courses until we've, we've made that vote?
Right, so the, the electives that are proposed right now, and I credit our teachers for giving their best effort for proposed courses, but they're probably not as innovative and creative and flexible as we'd like them to be long-term. You know, and I also think we need to, we need to explore different partnerships. Diane, I think you said last time around, students who might be getting into the work industry and some more partnerships, because I don't foresee, at least in the near future, us having chapter 74 programming and things like that, as much as I think that could benefit some of our students. So we need to find creative ways to do that. And the current requirements don't allow us some of that flexibility, especially because sometimes we can only offer a course that a student might need one period during the day. So if that period is last period, then that student can't take a double block where they might be able to take an engineering-type class and then go do a work study. Or they might not be able to do a work study at a local automotive or mechanic, with a local mechanic or somewhere in culinary arts. We just don't have that right now.
Well, I think it's pretty obvious where the current board stands, right? But, you know, we, we're open to the change. We definitely are open to it, and we also wanna make sure that it turns out to be a good decision.
Understood, and that's what, that's what we want too. And I, I do think, my vision would probably be that this program of studies would have some of that in there, and it's, part of it is the timing of everything. But I think we've talked, Cheryl and I have talked a few times about saying, well, we're, we propose these programs of studies in two-year intervals, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't come back to you next year and say, we have this course that we'd like to put in the program of study for 2019, 2020, even though this program of studies is being approved or changed as it is now. We're gonna continue to have those conversations with teachers, and we wanna tap into teachers' passion and expertise as well, which we think that can motivate students and engage students. Teachers are also teaching courses because we need these students to check a box for graduation.
So you're gonna also engage the students to find out some of, some of their interest here? Because I mean, my thought is this, this should be the opportunity for them to explore something, right? As well as just check a box, right? So, right?
Yeah, we've done some of that already, as teachers have tried to develop courses as electives. They've had conversations with students and in some departments, they've proposed, you know, a number of electives to students, and based on student response, they've only gone with like the top three choices from students instead of going with the six courses they were gonna propose.
Okay.
But there's certainly more room for flexibility and growth long-term.
My few questions, concerns are, one is, as we freed up some credits, and we're not 100% sure which direction this may go. We have, we have good thoughts and an idea, what we want to do. What happens if this doesn't fall in place and then we're freed up all those credits? Will the students feel like, hey, you know, I have, I really have nothing to do with this time now? Or will we, will you feel that way, that, hey, you know, nobody shows a genuine interest in these things that we put in place with great intention? The other thing is, as we were talking about STEM STEAM, I don't know how many different classes we really added to, to complement the STEM STEAM side of what we have. I see a couple of science classes that are proposed, botany and zoology. On the math side, I guess we're saying that we were pretty, in pretty good shape, because there isn't really much added. And I'm not, I'm not really talking about your, you know, traditional classes, but something that will really provoke thought, but also get the students to like and enjoy mathematics, which is not the easiest thing to do, but, you know, maybe that's, that's one way of attracting interest. And the last thing is around electives. I'm not sure what that translates to. I'm still not sure what that translates to. And I was thinking that we were gonna have a list of possibilities for the...
All of the proposed electives are in the document.
They are?
Yes.
So there is nothing beyond that, okay.
So there's, right, there's nothing, like, create to chapter 74 connection or anything like that for this version of the program?
Yeah. Just, just to be clear, I'm not really, I think, this is personally, I'm not really looking to completely carve out a vocational segment in this school district. I mean, we have vocational schools for that purpose. But whatever possible, you know, what you already launched and put in place with the, you know, work...
Workplace-based learning.
Workplace-based learning, work-based learning. Those are good things to have, and if we're gonna be able to do it under the auspices of chapter 74, at least a few things, that's good too. But I'm not really looking to really, you know, that was partially the model when we were students too. You had a lot of vocational stuff in your own school, and, you know, that model changed. I don't know if there's a need to go back there. But to the extent that it's possible to offer the variety, I think we're all for it. The other challenge that I was thinking about is, is we are trying to diversify. What does it translate to in terms of financing those? So are we going to be able to, are we going to have to hire a lot more teachers to be able to offer some of these classes? Or do we really benefit from the expertise and experience that we have in-house? It will be a combination, no doubt. I mean, it's not gonna be just one or the other. But did we think about those impacts, potential impacts, as we were coming up with these?
So one of the things that the staff is just phenomenal about is going out and seeking additional, either licensure or credentialing, so that they're able to teach some of these courses. You know, we have at least three teachers who are, four teachers, who are going on for either license, additional licenses, or going out and receiving AP training so that they can teach AP coursework. So I think if, the Grammy teachers will do whatever it takes to meet the needs of Grammy students. And so we, we certainly benefit from that, and I wouldn't see any reason that they would stop doing that. It's in their DNA, it's what they do.
And I think we've also talked, oh, last time I was here and tonight specifically about electives, but I think one thing that has been missing, is missing, that we haven't talked about tonight, is interventions, like supports for students, like interventions where we can start trying to fill skills and academic gaps in seventh, eighth, ninth grade. So we're not having students who have two or three directed studies or academic classes once they get to 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. And a lot of that is dictated by their IUP. But if we can have tiered intervention at earlier stages, then we should be able to provide those students, they should have access to age-appropriate curriculum by the time they're in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. And again, without flexibility, we, we can't get there.
All right. One final question based on what you just mentioned, Stephen. Since you said that this doesn't mean next year we can't come back with more suggestions. Are we approved, it kinda brings me back to some experiences that we had when we approved a new curriculum, and then we found out that it wasn't going anywhere, then there was some scratch or some restart and this and that. I don't know, I don't wanna, you know, make any assumption that it may, it may... I don't know, I don't wanna, you know, make any assumption that it may, it may mean the same thing, but does it mean that we're not going to start with this? We're gonna just experiment with it, or are you saying that we will start, but, you know, whatever doesn't work, we're gonna come back with more suggestions?
No, I think we can, we can certainly start with this. All, I mean, all this vote would be doing is, you know, specifically, I would say for the class of two thousand nineteen, letting them know that we have some flexibility. If you wanted to take an additional science instead of a history, an additional history instead of a science, an additional math class, um, things like that, they would have the flexibility to do so. What I meant by saying we could come back is, over the course of the next year, we might have, and Cheryl talked about this before, we might have an English teacher and a history teacher come together and say, you know what, we're doing a lot, there's, our classes overlap a lot. We wanna do this, um, collaborative teaching project where we're gonna offer a ten-credit double-block class where students are gonna get a history and an English credit for, but teachers, you know, to their defense, haven't had the time. This, by the time I figure kinda things out, I put this on teachers in December, and they've like kind of rushed to push it through. Um, the electives part of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so they haven't probably had the time, and I don't think they have much experience having a little bit of that freedom and flexibility to design some of those courses. And now they're starting to see that, oh, well, could we do this? And, yeah, whatever it might be, you know.
So can we, um, have, have some follow-up on this? You know, what would be the timeline, that, an appropriate timeline to maybe just come back in as a check, you know, as a check-in, to, to give us a sense for how this is evolving?
Yeah, I think we probably, maybe we can get together and come up with some measurable outcomes, so we can kind of measure ourselves against those moving forward. I think I would need to know specifically what information that you, you might be looking for in regards to it, because it's gonna be tou, tough to measure some things.
Yeah.
So I wanna be really specific about what that would look like, but we certainly should have an ongoing conversation about it.
Yeah, and, and that's more what I'm thinking, not necessarily, 'cause I know this is, you know, this is gonna take some time to really, uh, kinda get it up and running, and you might, I'm assuming you're probably gonna make some changes as you're going along. How much time do you think it would take to adequately measure yourselves when, when, when you need to tweak and maybe make some other additions, subtract some courses out because they didn't go over so well? I, I think I, what I'm looking for is the next iteration, because this doesn't feel like you guys are, um, confident on this iteration, it's the first iteration. So I think I'm, I'm interested in what the next iteration is gonna look like.
Yeah, so I think the program of studies is always, it's like a live document. It's always changing and evolving, so, um, but I think the combination of the proposed change about credits and this iteration of proposed electives, yes, I would agree, we're probably not fully satisfied with that. Um, so I would say specifically, like, this ninth-grade class and tenth-grade class, I thi, I think would have the most, we'd be able to really follow with them, because they're gonna move forward with it. This junior class has moved forward with different requirements, and it's kinda getting changed, like, as they're getting off the exit ramp.
Hmm.
Um, so, uh, ninth grade and tenth grade, I think, could give us a little bit more clearer of a picture about what flexibility that it could offer students. Um, and then by then, maybe some new potential opportunities, whether it be through elective interventions, um, they should benefit.
And students start making their, uh, choices in, is it March or April?
March.
So you guys are actively working on, on coursework?
Yeah, we've been running, saying like, this is a proposed change. We've been running, like, creating two schedules almost for students right now.
So maybe by March, mid-March, you would have a general sense of what courses you're going to roll out for kids to choose?
Ideally, ideally, I would say we would know in January, February, what courses we're gonna run for the following year. And some, and especially a, a school our size, there's some districts that run like a year on, on-off schedule, so you run certain courses in odd years and certain courses in even years if they're year-long courses, so that the, you have adequate class size, so classes aren't too small, classes aren't too big. And those are all things that we've had conversations about, but haven't fully been able to implement them at this point.
So I, I was kinda going down the same road, Dan, and was trying to go, and, and I guess ask if we could pencil something in for, say, February, March of, of next year, just to get an idea of, of what you were planning on. Is that kinda what you were doing?
Right, yeah, and just, just to hear, you know, how, how the rollout's been, you know, just what the progress has been, what the hiccups have been.
Yeah, and I think if we do something for the next few Februaries or Marches, have this kind of ongoing dialogue around it, I'd certainly be open to that and feedback and be able to start collecting data and feedback from students and teachers too.
So maybe February?
March is a little late.
March is what?
A little late.
All right, so maybe February, 'cause March we start rolling into, um, budget anyway.
And, and I personally, I'm not looking for anything extremely specific, just kinda like, you know, high level, how things have been going, what your proposed thoughts are.
Yeah.
Bird's eye view.
Yeah.
I can do that. Happy to be on it.
How, how does this compare to, I'm assuming there was some analysis of other districts and stuff. How does it compare to other districts where we're hearing that students, uh, school, uh, community, they're happy about their STEM STEAM, uh, electives, uh, the variety. Did, did we hear anything about that?
Um, so in the PowerPoint that I shared last, two weeks ago, last week, two weeks ago, I think, um, we did, we talked to fourteen different districts and more about what the requirement was, not so much about the elective side of it.
Hmm.
Um, so, I don't think there were any other districts that had both the four-year requirement for both. Um, there were two districts that I think had a four-year requirement in science and two districts that had a four-year requirement in history, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yeah.
But I think, like us, a lot of districts are looking for creative ways to support all students, not just your AP, not just your struggling, like, I think oftentimes you focus so much on the top and so much on the struggling student that you forget that group in the middle, or you don't forget, but you don't pay as much attention to. So I think a lot of districts are trying to find flexibility, um, for that, and being creative in ways to engage them. Some is through work-based learning, some of it's through pre-AP work to try to prepare students. A lot of it is being done through, um, coding, information technology, um, and things like that, which I actually am pleasantly surprised with some of the information technology that we already had established here, um, before I started, um, which is why we've pursued this grant for this project, Lead the Way.
Do we have coding?
We have computer science principles and exploring computer science, where there's components of coding, um, in the courses, but specific coding class we don't have, but, um, it's something that we've done a little bit of research on. And I think those are the types of things where we might be able to get even an in-house teacher to, um, teach a course because of a personal interest, potentially.
And the reason why I brought up other districts is similar to what you're saying, but we're trying to learn. If others already learned some things, came to learn from their experience, what, you know, uh, this generation has different interests, maybe they bumped into something that we can benefit from.
Yeah.
I don't know whether there was such conversation.
And this is, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is also aligned to MasCor, um, and the undergraduate, um, guidelines for admissions into Massachusetts State Universities and Colleges. Um, actually, the three years of history is above the expectations for undergraduate admission by a year. They, they recommend two years.
All right, so what is the recommendation from the committee?
I will make the motion.
To approve?
To approve.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Um, you know, just keeping in mind that February timeline, you know, early February.
So traveling.
Yeah.
So.
So the, the unknown can always be, um, can always be, um, disconcerting, and that's part of, I guess, our trepidation, that we have an opportunity, we're just putting all these things together. How does this fit in that, in that, uh, larger picture, especially since we just talked about strategic plan and all that? But all that said, I know that a lot of effort goes into, uh, something like this, a lot of thinking, so, uh, uh, thank you, and thank you, thanks to everybody who put, uh, their time, uh, to create this, uh, new approach, and we're looking forward to hearing from, from you guys.
Thank you for your support. We certainly appreciate it.
Absolutely, that's what we're here for.
Thank you to the teachers, 'cause I think this is the first time that they really went through this, and we, um, went back and forth quite a bit.
Yeah, I can't imagine that it was, it was, uh, less nerve-wracking for them to just come up with something, you know, meaningful than what we're, uh, hoping to do by just, you know, throwing out our ideas, our suggestions, so thank you for that. So with that, all in favor to approve, uh, the proposed, uh, changes to, should, should we call this a curriculum change, or?
Program.
Program of studies. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is it for today's meeting for the open, uh, session. We have a quick executive session, uh, that we're gonna try to wrap up within the next fifteen to twenty minutes, so we can rush to the, uh, Senior Center for the continuation of our meeting. So with that, um, we will, uh, rec, uh, take a recess from our open session, and we're gonna resume at the, uh, at the Senior Center. Uh, in the meantime, we're gonna vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, Part A three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee, the committee will return to open session as we resume at the, uh, at the Senior Center, at the Town Hall. So can we have a roll call, please?
Dan, hang with those, the aye.
Thank you.
Jennifer Curran, aye?
Sean Mike Simpson, aye.
Emery Ever, aye. We'll resume soon.